Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's study session at six o'clock. And this is the City of Casa Grande study session for the eighteenth of January. Mr. Rangel, you want to kick this off?
It's Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to cover a couple of topics this evening at our study session. We're going to start with a presentation by our local HOHP Hands Up: Services for Veterans and Military Families. And we've got Mr. Udo Cook, who is going to speak to the council and provide the mayor and council with a brief overview of some of the services and really the general direction of the organization. And then our next presentation will be our mid-year budget update by our finance department.
Udo?
Mayor, council, thank you for allowing us to present today. Like Mr. Rangel said, we're HOHP honoring, hiring, helping our heroes of Pinale. I'm just going to stick with HOHP. That first letter is a pretty big letter, but I'm here to kind of tell you that the organization I'm a founding member of, so is Kim, and unfortunately, Kim would be doing the presentation, but she's at the emergency room with her stepfather, who's been in all weekend, in and out. So I'm going to try to do as good as she can. I probably won't be as long.
You won't cry either, will you?
Huh?
You won't cry either, will you?
I won't cry. But in all fairness to her, she takes it with a lot of passion.
She does.
Which is good. But the organization, we founded back in 2011. We got our nonprofit in 2013, and we were challenged at that point to do a stand down, and we have just completed our ninth stand down at our facility out at McCartney Road, which we're renovating. And it looks like we're getting funding to finish the entire project where we could probably open sometime this year, and we'll invite you guys all for a ribbon cutting. We're very proud of that. All of the work has been done by volunteers. This organization is founded by volunteers. No one gets paid, which makes it unique to be in existence this long and continue to provide the services that we can. I'm sure all of you are aware that our building that we've been in, we were funded by the county for the last five years. Cut the funding for us this year, or last year. And the only thing that really is kind of irritating about that is that you normally find out if you're being funded in the, by the second quarter because you start the new fiscal year in the first, or third quarter. And we didn't find out until the end of third quarter that we weren't even going to be funded. So luckily for us, the people that own the building let us stay there for free, and they covered the utilities. The new owners of the building that you probably read in the paper, they've got all these great ideas. They're letting us stay there, too, because we're keeping an eye on the property. If there's a leak or something going on, we let them know, and they're pretty good about responding. We are looking for another facility, a location, preferably one that we will own. We don't have to do this again and move. The one thing about veterans is they don't like to have to keep getting uprooted and pulled from one place to another place. So one of the things that we're very proud of is when we opened the center downtown, it was again volunteers. We had a shell, and then we wrote a grant to Home Depot, and we got the materials. We had volunteers frame in our pantry, food pantry, and we framed in the front lobby. And it's our home. It's been our home. Kim gets very passionate about that because she hates to think about leaving it, but you know, I think in God's hand, you just kind of follow the way he leads you, and you hope that it's in the right direction. But in our center, and I have some of our volunteers that are here and board members, we feel very humble that we've been able to do what we've been able to do with just fundraising grants. And then it just seems like when we need some money, somebody walks in the door and writes us a check. Like when we were trying to do the ADA door for the front, we needed about $5,000, and we had a gentleman walk in, said, I understand you're looking for money for a door. And then he went into the conference room, made a phone call. I'm sure he was calling his boss, and he came out with a check for $5,000 and said, I don't want anybody to know who it was from. But he was a retired Colonel from the military. And so it's those kind of things that bring this together. Now, quickly, I'll go through it, but our center downtown hosts a cup of joe coffee every Tuesday morning. It's open to all veterans and their spouses. We average anywhere from seventeen to fifty that show up. It's gotten to be so popular that on the first Tuesday of every month, they do a potluck. And so they bring in all the breakfast, everything from biscuits and gravy, homemade biscuits and gravy, and it's great. We started a guitar for heroes, for vets. So we do guitar lessons for any of the veterans that want to learn guitar lessons, and that's going to be through the VA. And we have instructors here that are teaching already, even though we're not totally vetted yet with the VA, we've already started that because everybody wants to do the guitar lessons. We found that with veterans, they're kind of unique. We had veterans going to AA meetings with the general population. And when you're a veteran and you're talking about your issues, the general population doesn't understand what you're going through. And so we pulled that, and we brought them in-house. So we do AA for veterans every Thursday evening. We do a combat group session every Thursday morning where they can come in and talk about just about anything in the world. And I don't know, you know, PTSD is a huge topic. What people don't tell you is that any one of you can get PTSD, I mean, being in an accident. But it's an educational and awareness thing that we really are promoting. We have a counselor out of Tucson that actually will do courses for police officers and firefighters on PTSD awareness and recognition. So what we're trying to protect is any veteran getting killed because they're having an act, you know? I was just at the center today, and one of our volunteers said, yeah, you know, her significant other was, had a nightmare, and she literally said he was in bed going push, 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 but you know, he's having an episode. And something triggered that episode. And so for us, it's very important that we recognize that, and then we can try to help those individuals get through that. We have volunteers that we pick up along the way because we've helped them in some way. Our emergency funding is typically around 5,000, or how much we can raise, because we'll, we spend a lot of money on emergency housing. We have homeless folks, or a family of six living in a Tahoe. And you know, that's, that's just not where you want a veteran, a person that serves this country to be. We have seen almost 20,000 people through the, our center downtown. We don't really want to leave the downtown area. We are looking at a facility that's in the downtown area. I don't want to mention the name because I don't want that individual to get bombarded with phone calls from veterans, but it's a perfect place for us. So we're working on trying to come up with some funding. We may come back to the city and say, can you help us a little bit, too? But I think we're a great fit. I don't think we've ever come to the city and said, we need money, which is not a bad idea occasionally, but it's not something we want to do a lot. But I feel like we're a very important part of not only the City of Casa Grande, because you're bringing in more people and more businesses. And as you bring in more businesses and people, you're going to bring in more veterans that we can help. And if nothing else, it's just having the opportunity for veterans to talk to veterans and meet with veterans. Like I say, our center on McCartney Road, we're renovating it. It will be a homeless transitioning, and in some cases, we may have some that are getting out of the county jail, which is they have a Humvee portion at the jail, which is just for veterans. Or we'll have Vet Court folks. And I'm proud to say that HOHP was part of the organization that started Vet Court with the county. And so it eliminates for someone that did something stupid, maybe, getting a DWI or a minor felony, instead of having that on their record for the rest of their life, they're allowed to go through Veterans Court. If they complete all the requirements through Veterans Court, it doesn't go away on your record, it just becomes inactive. And so I've had people at Abbott, when I was working there, we hired some of those folks, and they would come back to me and go, and you know, it doesn't have, it has a felony, but it doesn't do anything. And I said, that's because they've gone through Vet Court, they've graduated, they've become better individuals, and so they go ahead and hire them. And I don't know if this is a topic for you guys, but I know one of the things that we're working on is, or we were with the county, was trying to go out and recruit off the bases for the jobs in Pinale County, which is going to be a huge thing as you continue to bring in more and more businesses, you've got to have employees. And so we have Eagle One, which has been kind of grounded because of COVID, but we're getting ready to roll it back out. It goes into every community in Pinale County and provides services, especially for those that are kind of homebound, that can't get to Tucson, can't get to Phoenix. So we were thinking we could use that platform for going onto the bases and almost like doing a recruiting session. And we had a few others, I think Richard Wilkie, your Economic Development Director, wanted to participate with us on that. So that's something, we're just working out the funding details, but that's, I think, going to be very, very critical for, for everybody, especially us. So really don't have anything else unless you have some questions. Yes?
I think I mentioned to you that Arnold Schwarzenegger bought twenty of those little houses and put them in California, and I don't know if it was for homeless or if it was for veterans, but those were well received for people that...
Well, you kind of took my thunder, but that is something that we are looking at doing. If we find the right property where we can expand, we would like to put in the tiny homes. It'd be almost 400 square foot. It'd be a one-bedroom, one-bath kitchen, you know, not a full-blown kitchen, but it would have a stove and stuff. And I guess the question I would bring back to the council is, I know there's impact fees on everything, would those require impact fees for each individual unit? Or would that be a one-and-done type deal? Because we're talking of, if we land this property, it would give us the ability to put in eight of the bigger, 400-square-foot homes, and then we want to put in two or three of the little hotel-style rooms, because then we wouldn't have to spend emergency funding. We could house them for a day, a week, however long we wanted, because we would own it.
I think that's a question for our planning department, but I'll leave that up to them, unless, Larry, you want to answer that question.
Mayor, members of the council, typically development impact fees are not something that can be waived due to the statutory requirements. There are other mechanisms for using other funds, if you will, to essentially pay for those, and would certainly take the opportunity to meet with the HOHP staff to discuss exactly. And as Mr. Cook has pointed out, we fortunately have a number of veterans that work for the City of Casa Grande, but one of those in our, right down the hall from the City Manager's Office, in Richard Wilkie, he's a very active member. And I know he's been a strong advocate for finding a, what I consider to be a pathway for that resolve on these, on these homes.
Okay, no, something to discuss. But Udo, I just want to say, you know, HOHP's done a phenomenal job. I know I've been down there several times downtown, and you know, you guys do a great job with our veterans, and you know, we'll try and help in any way we can.
Okay.
Just to comment to you, I just wanted to thank you, Udo. I've known Udo for many years, and he will not let it go. He's my neighbor, so he'll even come over and knock at the door and bring up some ideas. But, but you know, Udo, really, I mean, I know it's funny, but you, you've done so much, you know? And I want to thank some of the fellow veterans that are here with you, and I know they know that you work hard for this community, and Kim, and everyone else. You know, I, I went the other day, because I was meeting with Kim, and that center has just become so, like a home. It's so comfortable, and when you walk in, you can just see the family, you know, how they're sitting across from each other. One of them, he even had his dog there, you know? It's just so homey, and you guys have made it such a comfortable place for, for community members to come. So I really hope, I mean, whatever I can do to help, support, you know, I really, I know you're going to find your home, your next home, but I just wanted to thank everything you do for the community.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going away. I know there have been, I've had quite a few people say, well, why don't you just move your entire operations out to McCartney Ranch and do it there? It's not Casa Grande, it's not in the downtown area. I would love to see the downtown flourish and, you know, have, have, have the settings like in Scottsdale and Gilbert and those places where you have the patio seating and the restaurants and the entertainment, because at five o'clock, the whole place pretty much shuts down. And we would still be a part of that if we get this facility, but the way, the analogy we use for the McCartney is that, one, if we moved everything out there, homeless people would just be dropped off at the gate, and we know that. We get, we get homeless veterans now brought in from Maricopa County or wherever. And, you know, we can't help everybody, and we really kind of get irritated at times because they're not Pinale County residents, and that's what we are trying to take care of. But it's kind of like, the center downtown is our doctor's office, and McCartney is our hospital. And we need to make sure that we fix what we have problem-wise, and then get them healthy and back into the community so they can be vital citizens. So I appreciate it. I hope I didn't take the thirty minutes. And I guess she, she didn't send the slide presentation, so I saved you guys about twenty-eight minutes there. So if there's nothing else, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before you leave, you, you said you address combat veterans in a group there? I think I shared with you while I was there that my son was a captain in Iraq for a year and three days, and was a combat veteran, and came back and really got messed up for a while. It was really, really scary. I thought I was going to lose my son, but he got to a place where the military combat people were that he was comfortable with, and he's doing great now. He's doing absolutely great, but I owe you for that.
Well, it just, so people understand that a veteran will talk to a veteran, but not, they're not going to share their dark secrets with a regular civilian because they don't get it anyway. And so it's important to have these groups. I mean, during COVID, we, we had to close the center down, but we still functioned. We still took phone calls and Zoom meetings, and we still handed out food, food boxes. And I have to tell you, the Elks Lodge has been a great supporter. All we have to do is call them and say we're low on food, and they replenish, I mean, it's like they go shopping and they bring in shopping carts of food because we go through so much. I think that's one of the things that's so important that people realize is that we take the burden off of the food bank in the different areas because we take care of our own. We help with utilities and stuff like that. But you're absolutely right, the combat, it can get really, really bad. And that's the things that we're trying to be proactive on. And even during COVID, we had a call line because we had some veterans that were contemplating suicide, and we wanted to keep them in touch and make sure that doesn't happen. So again, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Udo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think next we have a presentation on our mid-year budget update. Are you gathered?
All right.
Thank you.
They have some really nice setups, like in Santa Fe and in New Orleans and different places where, like a bathroom and char facility, all different things.
At least a feather.
No, you're...
Okay.
Good evening, mayor and council. This evening, our mid-year budget update will focus on data up to November 30th of 2021. And the reason is that we did not have the entire revenue numbers for December, so as not to skew the projections, we thought it best to give you up to the full month available data that we had, which was up to November. All right, our budget, FY22 budget considerations, these are the issues that were taken into account in the preparation of the FY22 budget. Of course, our budget philosophy always is to maintain current service levels, levels of services if we are not certain about the revenue that we would be anticipating. Of course, we understand that we were dealing at the time with the pandemic. We looked at the prevailing economic factors and provided our revenue projections based on that. The major one, of course, as we all know, was the COVID-19 pandemic. We also took into consideration the fact that with an approved budget, we are able to move monies around internally among the departments and among the programs to accommodate any changes that were, that were necessary. We looked at, of course, our budget focused on the strategic plan that the city has in place, and we are here this evening to review our mid-year, the operations of the city. General fund revenue status. Revenues are trending higher than the same time period prior to COVID-19. I will touch on this further in a subsequent slide. The major economic assumptions that we looked at in FY22 were housing and sales taxes. Right now, the single-family permits, there's a slight decrease. We're thinking it's possibly due to the increase in cost of building materials and the availability of materials also. And however, the construction, commercial construction permit is fairly steady up to the data that we had up to November. Sales taxes, sales taxes are, we're doing great. Hospitality, restaurant, bar, hotel, that's up. Retail, food for home consumption, that's up. Marketplace sales, welfare ruling, that's up. We're looking at hospitality as of November 30th, 2021. We had collected $941,820. As of November, November, I'm sorry, November 30th, 2020, we had collected $941,820. November 30th, 2021, which is for fiscal year, which is for fiscal year '22, we collected On the retail section for fiscal '21, November 30th, we collected $4,873,524,000. As of fiscal '22, the collections were $5,377,776. That tells us that things are looking up in the sales tax category of the city's general fund revenues.
But before you get off that page, just so you don't have to go back to it, the single-family permits are down?
Slightly, they're down slightly.
Compared to what?
Compared to that same time last, last fiscal year.
Okay, so you're talking from like July of '21?
Yes.
Or '20?
July of, of...
To now versus '21 till now?
Fiscal '19.
Okay.
I mean, '20 and '21.
I have one question, too, on that page, on the marketplace sales, which is the internet sales tax. Do you know what those numbers are?
Certainly.
It's just interesting, even though we want everyone to shop local, but you can't get, you were actually getting some of our taxes back, so I'd like to know.
Certainly, I have that available. Fiscal '20, '21, the numbers were $296,559. Fiscal '22, $396,769.
They thought it would make a difference.
Yeah.
Guess they were wrong. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
General fund revenues. Slide, okay. We're looking at the revenues, breakdown of the revenues as projected in the FY22 budget. Of course, we understand that sales tax, sales taxes make up the larger portion of the city's revenue, followed by intergovernmental revenues, which I will elaborate on in a subsequent slide. We have some factors that, that would affect that later down in the year. Then we have, of course, property taxes, which make up seven percent, and licenses and permits that make up six percent of our overall general fund revenues.
Real quick, let's just say, nearly half of our income comes from our sales tax dollars, correct?
Sales tax, yes.
Okay. Very important point to me.
And it's, and it's holding steady.
And less than ten comes from our property taxes.
And that's holding steady. All right. When, in the first, the first slide that I presented to mayor and council, I indicated that I would elaborate on the revenues compared to where we were with COVID-19 and even prior to that. I want us to look at FY19 revenues collected. As of November 30th, in fiscal year '19, we had collected $17.1 million. As of November 30th, fiscal '20, we had collected, I would say, rounded $17 million. Fiscal '21, we had collected rounded $21 million. In fiscal '22, which is this fiscal year, our collections rounded at $23 million as of November 30th of fiscal '23, which I think is significant compared to the prior years, given where we are economically.
Mayor, I was concerned back on the property... Mayor, I was concerned back on the property tax. The county sets the cost on that, right? Property tax?
The property taxes, we set, we set our own rates and we, and our levy based on the assessed value of the property within the city.
Establish the rate.
And that is set during the budget, the budget preparation.
Is there any indication of it going up or down? Or is it just out there right now?
Property, let me see if I could, if I have that information at all in, okay. If we look at fiscal 19, property tax at this point, at November 30th, well, we had collected $1.5 million. Excuse me. In fiscal 20, we had collected $1.7 million. In fiscal 21, 1.5. And let's see where we are. We are $2 million in fiscal 22, which is, which is, which is an extraordinary increase over that same time period in collections.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay. Here's where we are with intergovernmental revenues. When the budget, during the preparation of the budget during March and late June 2021, we operated, we projected our revenues on a 58,632 population. As of October 2021, when the census numbers came out, that of course, that number dropped to 53,658 persons counted within the city. That impacted the level of revenue that would come to us from the state. When we projected revenues or when we had the first set of data from the state, we, they projected 3.9 million, I would say rounded $4 million in VLT taxes. They projected $4.6 million, $4.7 million in HOF, $7.3 million in TPT and $7.7 million in income taxes. However, once the numbers came in, that was, those numbers or projections dropped significantly. For VLT tax, it dropped from 3.9 million to 3.7 million. HOF dropped from 4.6 to 4.4. TPT, 7.2 or 7.3 to 6.4. And income tax, 7.7 to 7 million. The impact on our general fund revenue is to the bottom there, right? Our drop in, the impact on general fund is 1.2 million. And the impact in HOF, of course, is a little less significant. $272,000 for a total of 1.5. And we will see later on in, as this conversation progresses, how that impacts our projected revenues. I'll pause for your questions.
Have you looked at, because I know the legislature passed this flat tax. And the flat tax, without getting into all the details, lowers the total revenue from the state that they collect, but they increased the city's percent, right? So they increased what cities would get as a percent of that as a shared revenue.
The shared revenue.
Yeah.
We're looking, I think.
It probably hasn't taken effect yet.
It will take effect in 2024.
Okay. All right. So, but that's something we need to look at, right?
Yes, definitely. We need to keep our eyes on that. Major general fund revenues by source, and these are just the major revenues. And we're providing Mayor and Council the approved budget numbers, the actual revenues collected to date, the projected revenues through the end of the fiscal year. Of course, you will notice in there that sales, state sales tax, state income tax, we expect them to drop, these numbers to drop by 7%. So we expect to collect 93% based on what I presented to Council earlier. Local sales taxes, we budgeted local sales taxes at $26.4 million. We're projecting through the end of the fiscal year in the general fund to collect $27.5 million in sales tax revenues. And of course, the property taxes remain as levied, including the, including the SRP. Charges for services, we projected 2.0, we budgeted 2.5, we're projecting 2.7. In licenses and permits, we're projecting to collect roughly around what was budgeted and franchise taxes slightly, slightly over what was projected to be collected. In fiscal 2022, we're projecting, as I indicated earlier, we're projecting a small shortfall in revenue. And that is based on November 30th numbers. We're projecting a small shortfall of $155,000, which is relatively insignificant. We're hoping that we are the actual, the actual information surpasses what we're projecting so that would wipe out the projected shortfall by the end of fiscal year. General fund expenditures. Of course, we all know personnel makes up the larger, largest portion of our budget. And of course, that 74.3 includes the funding that was set aside for the PSPRS unfunded liabilities from bond proceeds. We, after personnel costs, we're looking at contractual services and the 11.3% in transfers. These numbers go towards the areas of weakness in some of the other funds and also to fund some of the bond, debt service on bonds that come from, that come from the excise tax revenues.
Personnel costs, has that gone up or down or the percentages?
I don't expect, I expect personnel costs to go fall below the budget. And the reason is that we budgeted in fiscal 22, personnel costs, including the unfunded liabilities that the city would have had to pay for public safety for that fiscal year, not minding that we were also projecting to float bonds to cover that liability. So I'm certain that we will, we will, we will end the fiscal year a lot more, looking a lot brighter than we expected when the budget was originally presented.
Have we had any reactions to people because of the, the taxes and the personnel? I know that a number of places are having trouble getting employees. I was just curious. Is the city comfortable that we're going to be able to draw in our employees? It's amazing how many leave certain industries and, and just a question, we're at 74.31% personnel right now. And I don't know if we have any missing?
That 74.31 is percentage of the overall budget, not, not personnel as in staff or employees, but the budget numbers. Whether, I don't know how the pandemic is affecting the longevity of our, of our staff. I would probably defer to HR on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Okay, our budgeted expenditures by department. We anticipate the city closing the fiscal year with expenditures a lot lower than what was budgeted. Our overall budget was 100, in the general fund, was $150 million. We're projecting expenditure to date is $79.9 million. Excuse me. And we're projecting total expenditures at $128 million. And of course, that includes the, that includes the general, under general operations, the monies that were set aside for bond proceeds to make up for the unfunded liabilities on PSPRS.
Thank you. I think it's important to hit that point about this 74% of the budget for personnel that the PSPRS expenses in there for this year. So what that number's about, how much of that 74% is just the PSPRS? Because we're not technically spending all of that on current salaries, correct? We're spending it on salaries plus?
Yes, salaries plus. Under the general fund, general operations, the budget was 91.3, which included, included about $68 million for the PSPRS for bond proceeds. We've expended 62 million, I believe, was, was paid out to PSPRS to satisfy their unfunded liabilities. And we're projecting, we're projecting 86 million in expenditures under the general operations department of the city. And that includes transfers, which is technically not, not an expenditure. It's just moving monies out to, to other, other funds.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that too, that that's kind of a one time.
Yes.
Because we're buying debt obligations.
We should see savings from it for over the next 20 years, right?
We anticipate next year's budget to be a lot lower than what it is in FY22.
That was the plan anyway.
Okay, we'll look at other funds.
One more question. And I'm probably not, maybe, maybe not where you are on this. I was just looking at the three-year revenue comparison, November 30th is highlighted in three places there. And is it, is it up, down, or how are we doing on that?
Are you looking at slide number six?
Yeah.
Okay. We're, we're doing fairly well. As I indicated before, the revenues collected to date in fiscal 22 far exceeds the revenues collected in each individual fiscal year presented in this slide for fiscal year 19, 20, and 21. So we're trending a lot higher in fiscal 22 than we were in the prior three years.
Right. Revenue up is good.
So the revenues are up.
Yeah.
Which is favorable.
Thank you again.
You're welcome. Okay, so we look at the other funds. We projected 7.9, as I indicated before, 7.9 million dollars in, in HOF revenues, which is based on what the, the state would allow us. We've collected 3.1 million. We're projecting the 7.4, which is what the state would allow us in fiscal 2022. Budgeted expenditures under HOF were 11.2 million. We've expended 2.3. We're projecting a lot less than what we budgeted. We're projecting expenditures at the end of fiscal year 22 at 4.7 million in HOF. On the sanitation, we've projected revenues at 13.4. Actual revenues are 2.6 million. And we're projecting at fiscal year end to collect 7.62 million, or to build 6.2 million rather. We projected, budgeted revenues at 10 million, actual 1.2. We're projecting to spend 2.5 million in sanitation. Wastewater, almost the same thing. 13.4 was budgeted. Four million has been collected and we're projecting 9.7 as of the end of the fiscal year with expenditures of 5 million. So for each of these scenarios, each of these funds, you will note, Mayor and Council will note that we're projecting to collect more revenues than we're projecting to spend. On the Gulf, we project, we budgeted 1.6 million. We've collected 508 to date, projecting to spend, projecting to collect 1.2 million in revenues. And under the column titled FY21 Fund Cash Balance Unaudited, these numbers, with the exception of HOF, include cash balances, not fund balance, but cash balances available as of the end of fiscal 21. I'll pause for your questions.
So, yeah, Larry, this question for staff, I guess, is why are the projected expenditures so much lower than the budget? Is it because we're not spending the CIP?
Capital.
The capital improvement projects? Or is that in this number here at all? Or maybe?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there are a number of elements that are not included related to, when I say not included, for example, we have debt service payments. There could be a variety of things that just from a timing perspective.
Okay.
Maybe driving these expenditures down.
Okay.
I know that Angel has a slide that's going to talk specifically about the capital improvement program. You'll see through that slide that there's a number of projects that are underway, but there's a number of them that we've not had a major cash outflow as of yet at this point.
I was just, I was just curious, because I know we budget for certain things. I just want to make sure we're, we're doing those certain things, right? That we, we put this whole plan together. And not that it's a bad thing. I mean, it's always good to not spend as much as you had budgeted. That's a good thing. I'm just, but I just want to make sure we're accomplishing the things that we, we want to accomplish.
Right. And while we are not going to go into specific projects, every initiative, there is, as I said, there is a summary slide that's going to talk more specifically about CIP.
All right, then I'll, I'll hold my further comments.
Okay, this is the total of capital improvement projects that the city budgeted in fiscal 2022, a total of $64 million. And these are the expenditures to date. And let me pause here to say that there are several factors that make for this level of expenditure against the capital improvement projects that Mayor and Council approved for fiscal 22. Of course, we know we have the pandemic. You, Mayor and Council will remember that we, the city came before Mayor and Council seeking approval to purchase vehicles. We are certain that we will not receive those vehicles in this fiscal year because of the shortage. As such, those monies that were budgeted in fiscal 22 may well be expended down in fiscal 23 or even beyond because of the nature of things as they stand right now due to the pandemic. So the pandemic is affecting us in several ways. Of course, as we looked at the second slide in my presentation, we showed where the housing permits went down because of the possible, possibly a lack of readily available building materials. And the same is true for our capital improvement projects. So it is not at all based on the fact that our individuals in the various departments are not diligent enough to undertake these projects, but rather while there is the diligence, there is a lack of resources to make these things happen.
Remind me, remind me what the DIF stands for?
Development Impact Fees.
Okay, thank you.
So so far, based on the foregoing, we've only expended $3.7 million in expenditures on our capital improvement projects.
And Larry, remind me, what's the, what is the time limitation on development impact fees?
There is typically a 10-year window from the time of collection to the time that we have to expend them.
Okay. And we're not bumping up against any of those?
There are, the, the good news for the city of Casa Grande is that 10 years ago, our growth was at a much lower rate. And so we easily are expending those revenues that we would have collected at that point in time. The task will be continued to sustain the, the most recent growth that we've had in expending those funds within the next 10 years.
Thank you.
And I suspect, Mr. Mayor and Council, that when you see our fiscal year 23 proposal for CIP, this year was very robust. It likely will mirror and probably exceed what, what we had requested in fiscal year because of the capital needs that we're experiencing because of the growth.
Okay. Thank you, Larry.
Do we have on this budget the Francisco Grande expenses that we have at this point? Normally, we do every year have a expectation of what it's going to be or what it is.
I apologize. I do not have information on Francisco Grande in this presentation.
What's that?
It's usually in the detail when we do the detailed budget.
But we will provide that during the budget preparation process.
I knew you'd take care of that.
Thank you. And Mayor, I apologize. I did not have DIF under the abbreviation. And Mayor, I apologize, I did not have DIF under the abbreviation section there, I missed that one, but I, we provided, we provided this not only, not only for your information.
DIF stands for?
Not only for your information, but the information of the readers out there who would access this information through our various media, media. So we know the CIP is capital improvement projects, ISF Internal Service Funds, and CFD Community Facilities District, and you will find a lot of these abbreviations in our, in our calendar. We are here on our mid-year budget study session. The next session, we'll be meeting with city manager to review the FY twenty-three fee proposals that would be brought before council during the budget preparation process. Pause for your questions.
I think we're good.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can just add a few things in closing, and want to thank Angel and Roberta for their time in putting this together, really, this mid-year budget overview is just to really set the tone, because we find ourselves in what I would consider to be that budget calendar now, and, and staff has been working diligently to work on, as the mayor and council is aware, our capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-three, as well as our operational budget for twenty-three. We've asked the mayor and council and staff to accelerate our timeline by a couple of months this year, so we're, so we're on track for that, and, and, and we will be working with the mayor and council to establish a, a budget retreat to go over the fiscal year twenty-three budget, likely in, in March or April. So we'll, we'll be working on the calendar there, but I, I hope that the mayor, really, this is an opportunity to kind of set the tone, and, and I think it's clear from the data and the information that was reported by the finance department tonight, that we are very financially sound. We, we, we've always taken a very practical approach to our budgeting, and you'll see, you see through the numbers tonight that ultimately, our revenues are really trending higher than what we had projected, and our expenditures are trending lower. That ultimately ends, will result in a fund balance each year that can be used in the next fiscal year. But as far as the, the general fund is concerned, we've seen a lot of strength in the sales tax numbers this evening. Most of that is really driven by the strong construction and growth that's going on. Still, what we consider to be a lot of, of that revenue stream that's reported in sales tax, that is coming from what, what many of us will consider a construction sales tax, which is a one-time revenue. But you've saw as well that we've had, we've got higher revenues in retail sales and e-commerce, and practically, when you look down the list of the various categories that we tax, we, we really see very strong trends in each of those. To your point about the capital improvement program, Mayor, we are actually working on a report that we'll be giving the mayor and council at the February seventh meeting, that will talk about where we're at in the progress of our fiscal year twenty-two capital improvement program, as well as some of the highlights for fiscal year twenty-three, and some of our ideas about how we're going to finance those various programs. And, and so ultimately, again, just want to thank the finance department, the mayor and council for, for your diligence in our budget process, and anticipate that we will be continuing down this path with, with more and more meetings, leading up to the consideration of the tentative budget and final budget in June, July.
And Larry, just a question then, too, as we move forward and we start to talk about bonding, geobonds and or other project, I know the other project can be in, in, within the CIP, how, where does that, where is that going to fall? Because I've not gone through this process of, of actually, you know, passing a geobond, and where that money resides, and how do we budget it, and what's it look like?
So essentially, on that same meeting, in that same study session in January, when we're talking specifically about the capital improvements, staff is putting together a report that is a recommendation to the mayor and council on potential bond financing. We're still finalizing that now. We want to make sure that we're utilizing as much of the available cash that we have for pay-as-you-go. I know that's been the philosophy of the mayor and council in the past. We're, we will continue with many of the items that are particularly related to growth and that, and development impact fees can be utilized on. And so at that same meeting on January seventh, we will, we will at least make our recommendation on various financing sources that will include general obligation bonds, will include other, other potential bonding, as well as pay-as-you-go. So that'll be at January seventh, is, our, excuse me, February seventh. As far as the timing, Mayor, to answer this question specifically, it, it's our understanding that sometime mid-February, we will be getting a notice from Penal County asking us what types of, what kind, what types of ballot questions may be coming on our general election. And at that point, if the mayor and council is wanting to proceed with that, we will be bringing back an action item for those geobond questions that likely will transpire sometime in early March. Those will then go on the ballot in, in our general election in November.
Okay, so we don't have a lot of time on that?
We, we are, we are under the, the, the time crunch at this point, yes.
All right, thank, thank you, Larry. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments?
Five minutes.
Okay, thank you, Angel, and thanks for your staff and all your hard work, appreciate it, thank you. All right, we'll stand adjourned for, it's probably about six or seven, Mr. Powell. No, five minutes, you're right.